Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. If you'll stand with us, please, for the pledge to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. You may be seated. First on our agenda is a public hearing. This is tax relief for the elderly. This ordinance will update the annual income limits for exemption from or the deferral of taxation of real estate. Manufactured homes is defined in the Code of Virginia thirty-six dash eighty-five point three or any portion thereof owned and are occupied as the sole dwelling of a person not less than sixty-five years of age and providing the same exemption for such property of a person who is determined to be permanently or totally disabled. This is a policy that we have, or an ordinance we have in place now, and we're reviewing it tonight using the same guide, income guidelines, as the county of Montgomery. Is there anyone that would like to speak to this request? Or this proposal? Is there anything else we need to add, Mr. Helms?
No, sir.
What is the income level?
We don't want to know. We might qualify.
That's what I'm hoping.
The new one would be from zero to thirty-two thousand six hundred to get a hundred percent relief, from thirty-two thousand six oh one to forty thousand eight hundred to sixty percent relief, and forty thousand eight oh one to fifty-one thousand, you get forty percent relief.
Thank you. Is there anyone else to speak to this proposal for this ordinance? If not, we'll close this public hearing, and town council will come to order. You have before you the minutes of the last meeting, and we'll entertain a motion to approve. If you had an opportunity to look over the minutes.
So moved.
Second.
Motion in a second to approve the minutes of the last meeting. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
opposed no. Thank you. We're real privileged this evening to have with us the president of the student council at Christiansburg High School, whose name is Andrew Bradshaw. We're real happy to have Andrew with us this evening. He's sitting back there with a distinguished gentleman who's no stranger to these chambers, Wayne Booth, who served for many years as a town councilman. Welcome, Mr. Booth. Public hearing held on November the sixth, two thousand twelve, an ordinance amendment request for chapter twenty-six subdivisions of Christiansburg Town Code in regards to traffic impact analysis requirements, and chapter thirty zoning of the Christiansburg Town Code in regards to provisions for planned housing development for horses in the R-1A Rural Residential District, and regulations for amateur radio antennas and communication structures. Do we have a recommendation from the planning commission?
Yes, sir. They recommend that you accept this, or adopt this ordinance change, a seven oh vote. Seven four.
And that's all sections of the ordinance?
Yes, sir.
All right. We'll take that up later in the meeting. We have with us this evening an old friend who is the CEO of the Planning District Commission. It's Kevin Byrd, executive director of the Planning Comi, of the New River Planning District Commission, and he will introduce his guest.
Yes, sir. Well, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers, I appreciate the opportunity to be with you all tonight and provide an update of some of the work that the Planning District Commission's been engaged with over the past eighteen months or so. I am joined by Kim Thurlow on our staff. She's a project coordinator for the New River Livability Initiative, and she's going to share an update with you all on that project here in just a moment. But for those of you who may not be familiar with the Planning District Commission, we were formed by the local governments across the region about forty-three years ago to provide service to the local governments. And primarily, we're involved with providing technical assistance to the members in a variety of ways. We also have a unique forum in that our board is comprised of elected officials across the region, and so they come together on a monthly basis and have the opportunity to talk about things that are going on across the region. And we have broad enabling legislation, and we can do anything our local governments ask us to do, and that's been able to provide some pretty unique solutions, I think, across the region and for local governments over the forty-three years. But before we get started on the update, I want to put two questions out there for you, and if you have some feedback when we finish up our update, well, it'd be great. And if not, if you want to catch me later, I'd appreciate that, too. But the first question is, what's the most pressing issue that you face as an elected official for the town of Christiansburg? And then the second question would be, is there anything that the commission could be doing for you or should be doing for you that we're not doing now? I'd like to hear that kind of feedback on both questions when we finish up or later on. We have a handout there for you that I put on your tables when I walked in, and the first page there is about the Planning District, and the second two pages are about the livability initiative. And I'll draw your attention to the right-hand column on that first page. That's a list of our board members across the region, and you'll see on there that Mr. Showalter is elected official representative from the town on the commission, and Mr. Showalter's been on there for several years, has been a regular contributor, and oftentimes mentioned some things that town's doing, and I appreciate that insight. It's been very helpful. Mr. Weaver is a founding board member of the commission, so he's been along with us for forty-three years, and he has been in that treasurer role all forty-three years except for one year. He was chair of the commission for a year. So we appreciate Christiansburg's commitment to the board, and also important to note, we have an alumni at the PDC, Mr. Stipes, had several years on the commission and also served as chair as well. So a lot of commitment from the town there on that regard. Some of our projects that we're working on with town, just recently, we started working with Nicole here in the planning department on a Safe Routes to School program for the Christiansburg Primary School and Christiansburg Elementary School, and this is a hundred percent grant program for this year. Next year, it transitions to an eighty-twenty, so we're hopeful we can get a packet in on behalf of the town to have some improvements for walking and biking to school, and the idea is working with the parents and teachers in the school to find ways the kids can walk to school or bike to school and an alternative for them. And in the beginning of January, we're going to be working with the MPO on a bikeway-walkway master plan for the MPO area. The PDC recently finished a regional bikeway-walkway plan that was a higher elevation, and this will be an opportunity for us to dive a little deeper into both towns in the western part of Montgomery County that's in the MPO that has some planning for the bikeway-walkway aspect. Each year, we coordinate a meeting with our Commonwealth Transportation Board member, Mr. Dana Martin, the past few years, and that's been an opportunity for our members to come and meet with Mr. Martin and talk about some transportation enhancement projects. This is the old T-21 program, which is often downtown enhancements or trail enhancements, and it's been an opportunity for folks to meet with them and talk about their projects and get some motion on some of these funding initiatives, and the town's taken advantage of that with the downtown and also with Huckleberry Trail. I think the town's seen the benefit of meeting with Mr. Martin on that, and will continue to do those meetings. And this past year, we had the opportunity of creating a new ad hoc group called a Regional Transit Coordinating Council, and this is a group that comes together quarterly and talks about all the transit issues that are going on around the region. We have a lot of new transit systems and expanding, as you all well know. So this has been a chance for them to come together and talk about ways to work together, and they've had two meetings so far. I think it's been quite fruitful for them to coordinate. And I just want to point out that the town council members and staff in Christiansburg have been very involved in a lot of the programs that we do, and the ways that they're involved often involves some leadership, too, so we appreciate that commitment from the town. And we launched the social media this year. We have a Facebook page and Twitter account, a redesigned website as well, so I encourage you to go to the website and sign up for our monthly, or bimonthly newsletter and get that in your email box, and sometimes it goes out in hard copy as well if you prefer that option. So a way to increase the transparency of the work that we do and also get more people involved in the projects that we offer and programs. The last thing I'll mention on the PDC side is we had a unique opportunity this past summer where we did an agency assessment, and we sent out surveys and conducted focus groups across the region with all of our members, finding out the things that we do well, finding out the things that we don't do so well, and what are some programs that the members would like for us to be involved with that we haven't done, doing in the past. So the results of that assessment came back to us about two months ago, and our commission's going to take that up at the meeting next week. So the next twelve to twenty-four months, maybe some new things coming out of the commission, and those of you that participated in the focus groups and sent in a survey really appreciate the feedback and the commitment that you all have to the commission. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Kim, and she can talk more about livability initiative, and then we can circle back to those two questions or any other general questions that you have for us at the PDC.
This is Kim Thurlow. She's the project coordinator for the livability initiative.
Thank you. I'm just going to take a few minutes to update you on the progress to date of the livability initiative. For those of you who are a little less familiar, it's a three-year regional planning process. We're focused on ten different topic areas, so it keeps us pretty busy. We're focused on everything from housing and transportation, energy, natural resources, to economic development and community health, and arts and culture, and thinking about how trends within those particular topic areas positively or negatively affect quality of life for residents in this region. And so for the past two years, we've been focused on a couple different efforts. One is a large citizen outreach effort. We've, through a variety of different forums and formats, heard from over thirteen hundred residents in the New River Valley, primarily focusing on priority needs, concerns, and trying to understand their future vision for what they want to see in this region over the next twenty years. And we've also been collecting a lot of data and doing a lot of data analysis to try and better understand trends within these topic areas. So what I wanted to do, there's a lot of information, there's a report that should have gone out, I think in September, the larger report. What's included in your packet tonight is just sort of a snapshot of some of the information and data that's in here, but it's basically, this report is a synthesis of lessons learned to date, or the major lessons learned to date. So I just wanted to highlight a couple things on both the data side as well as the community input side that we've received that relate to Christiansburg. The first piece is probably no surprise in that Montgomery County's population is growing fast. We're expecting between twenty-five and thirty thousand new residents into the New River Valley over the next twenty years, and the majority of that will be around the Blacksburg, Christiansburg, Montgomery County area. To date, it's been primarily early and mid-career workers that have come to this part of our region, and over the next twenty years, we're seeing that there's going to be sort of an even distribution of residents across the full range of ages. And so thinking about how services and housing meets the needs of a broad spectrum of ages within our region is going to be really important. Also thinking about out commuting and in commuting. So over the last little while, out commuting for jobs has been reduced, at the same time that there's been an increase in folks coming into Blacksburg, Christiansburg, Montgomery County area for work from the rural areas, and it's going to continue to increase if things stay the same. So thinking about Christiansburg is a major retail center. It's really kind of taken over that role in many ways from Roanoke in terms of providing that service, and there's going to be an increased demand for services and an interest in more entertainment and arts and culture type activities is what we're hearing from residents. In terms of housing, we're projecting demand for ten thousand new homes, ninety-five percent of which will be in Montgomery County, and also a need for existing home repair and maintenance on about significant repair and maintenance on fourteen thousand existing homes within our region. And so when we start to think about new construction and where that grows, that comes some great opportunities and some trade-offs, and that comes in with the community comments, where there's a greater interest in making sure that housing stays affordable in our region, more affordable rental housing, also hearing an interest in terms of independent senior living communities or senior housing. In terms of, there's also an interest in connecting housing. So by and large, the comments, the community comments that we received related to transportation-related issues or pedestrian issues. Definitely an increased interest in pedestrian-friendly neighborhoods and in trails that connect neighborhoods to places people want to go, services and jobs, seeing that from Huckleberry Trail Extension as an example, but also in terms of expansion of the public transportation system. As part of our outreach effort, we conducted a lower literacy survey where it showed that where public transit was available, people are really starting to use it, and the trends have increased. So there does seem to be an increased demand. So those are some of the things that we're finding in the community. As we transition over the next six months, what we're doing is moving into a scenario planning phase where we're essentially looking at different opportunities or ways forward to meet the community vision and some of the trade-offs between different pathways forward. And so we'll make sure to bring that information back to you. If you have any questions, I'd be glad to take them. Thanks.
I don't have a question, but I have a comment.
Sure.
Concerning how the importance of what you're doing. I think maybe everybody saw in the paper this morning, there was quite a large article about just what you're talking about, it was the population, and as I recall, I think it said by two thousand thirty that we would have a larger population here than what Roanoke County, Roanoke, Roanoke City. So we'd be larger than that, which I thought was really, really quite a statement there on the growth of this community, and we appreciate what you guys do.
Thanks very much.
Yeah, I picked out, since you look at those projections, most of it's been historical going forward, but I think if you look at the opportunities that we have in this region, that we well could surpass those numbers with all the innovation that's happening around us and all the job creation opportunities that are out there.
We have any questions?
Thank you both very much for being here. I'm a big fan of what the PDC does because we all care about Christiansburg, but they have a larger context view, as Henry can see. It's very interesting to see what's on people's minds around our area and how we can stay connected. Specific questions for you, this is, I had no idea that you're working on a Safe Routes to Schools proposal. I think that's fantastic. Oh, it's a plan, or are you going to also be doing a proposal?
Part of the application development is that you worked with two different stakeholders. I believe you all had a meeting yesterday?
Yes, we had one yesterday and one last Monday also.
Very good. That's fantastic. And then the bicycle pedestrian master plan that you're doing for MPO, is that, how zoom in is that going to be? We're interested in Christiansburg and what we can do within our community to do that. Is that going to be a pretty good look-see at Christiansburg?
We anticipate it to be that way. I was very impressed with where staff came out on the regional scale and looking at the granular detail they had of the regional scale was pretty impressive, so we already have a lot of that gathered, but it's taking it the next step. So we'll be going neighborhood by neighborhood in terms of opportunity connection.
And when will that be completed? Do you have?
It's a twelve to eighteen month process.
Okay.
So next year now.
Very good. Thank you.
I'd just like to say, I was on before, on the Planning District Commission prior to Kevin being hired there. I'm not calling out the old administration to the PDC, but I'd just like to thank Kevin and Kim and your team, basically. I mean, it is night and day, and these reports that we're getting and the information that's being put out, the programs that they're pushing, I mean, it is incredible, and it is much appreciated.
Thank you. Appreciate hearing that. That's a lot of thanks to this person, Kevin, next to me.
We participated recently in a kind of an evaluation of what, where we were and what we've done, and I'd like to commend Kevin and your staff for the advances that you've made with the program to this date, and we know that a lot of that is because of your efforts, and the livability initiative is something we're all deeply interested in. You made a statement here in the brochure that unemployment is high for those who do not graduate high school. I hope that message will be conveyed throughout the New River Valley. I know Montgomery County is working to that end with a commitment to graduate with students, but it's an age-old problem of unemployment being high for those young people who do not possess a high school education, and even for those who only possess a high school diploma. But that message needs to be communicated to our young people. Expect to get a job, stay in school.
And I think what we're also learning is the benefit of the livability initiative is the link to educational attainment and health, and that you see a direct correlation with better health outcomes with higher educational attainment, and the cost to localities also for educational attainment and health.
Any other questions for Kevin or Kim? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. We reserve a portion of our meeting to hear any comments from anyone who would like to address council on any matter. Is there anyone here that would like to speak to council on any concern? Going once, twice? Yes, ma'am. Just state your name and address your comments to council.
My name is Catherine Dowling. I'm the new president of the Bills of Pepper's Scary Homeowners Association. We would like to commend the council on the cell tower and the final construction. They've done a nice job. Thank you.
Oh, thank you. Thank you. Anyone else to address council? If not, then we'll close the citizens' comments and move on to the next order of business, and that is the ordinance amendment to chapter twenty-six subdivisions and chapter thirty zoning of Christiansburg Town Code with regards to provisions for planned housing developments, horses in the R-1A Rural Residential District, and regulations for amateur radio antennas and communication structures. You heard the recommendation of the planning commission? I've reviewed this recommendation many times, multiple times at least, and I support the planning commission, and I'd make a motion that we adopt the recommendation.
Second.
A motion in a second to adopt the recommendation of the planning commission discussion?
Can we act on these individually, or do we have to take the whole thing as it comes?
Yes, we can. We can break it down. There are three items, I believe, in that ordinance amendment, one having to deal with horses, one regulation for radio antennas and communication structures.
And the other is the traffic impact statement?
And the traffic impact statement.
Carry it through.
Is there a reason to?
I'm just not satisfied with the recommendation on the horses. They're recommending five thousand square feet, I think. Is that what I'm reading?
Eight thousand.
Eight thousand? Eight thousand square feet.
I'm just, you know, we've had several correspondences from citizens on Miller Street opposing this thing, and I cannot support.
Well, I'm not supporting it either, and this.
Miller Street Senator.
R two.
R two.
R two.
And it's only allowed in R-1A.
R-1A, and we've only have two of those areas in town. Isn't that right?
There's very few. One out there near Murray Street.
Diamond Point.
So then what does this do to the requests from the Miller Street people for a horse?
Wouldn't be allowed.
Wouldn't be allowed. Okay. Thank you. Further discussion? Ms. Clerk, if you will poll council and the vote is to accept or deny the recommendation of the planning commission, an aye vote is to accept the recommendation. Aye.
Counselor McCall?
Aye.
Counselor Hubbard?
Aye.
Counselor Showalter?
Aye.
Counselor Stipes?
Aye.
Counselor Van Hoosier?
Aye.
I believe that's a six oh vote, and the recommendation carries. Number two on this part of the agenda is the Public Private Education and Infrastructure Act, PPEA contract approval for the Diamond Hill Park Stream Restoration, which consists of three phases. You should have received a copy of the contract documents for the Diamond Hill Stream Restoration and Independence Boulevard culvert replacement. Discussion?
I move we move ahead with the project as presented and empower the authorized town manager to sign the agreement.
Second.
And motion in a second to move forward with the project. Annual manager being a fiscal agent. Discussion?
I would just like to comment that Mr. Nelson came over to my home last night, and we went over this page by page, and I thought he did a very good job, and I appreciate what he did, okay? I appreciate what he does most of the time, too. He came to my house last night, and I took it and told him to leave.
Well, I was kind of in the middle. He came to my house, and we talked about fifteen minutes on it or so, and I got a pretty decent understanding of it, and I do appreciate the fact that, you know, we have a nice concise document here to follow, so I also recommend we support it.
Wayne, we're kidding you, but we know how much work you put into this.
I feel slighted now because he's seen about three of us, and he just handed it to his head. But we appreciate it.
Okay. We have a motion on the floor to move forward with the project. I'm going to ask the town clerk to poll council on this matter.
Who's seconded?
I did.
Counselor McHarver?
Aye.
Counselor Hall?
Aye.
Counselor Hubbard?
Aye.
Counselor Showalter?
Aye.
Counselor Stipes?
Aye.
Counselor Van Hoosier?
Aye.
I believe that's a six oh vote, and this will be done in phases, and it is going to be a quite lengthy project. Good luck, Mr. Nelson.
Thank you.
The third item is the proposed cost recoveries from DUI and reckless driving convictions ordinance. This is a carryover from October the second, two thousand twelve. I thought we'd be able to take action on this this evening, but I believe that it's going to require a public hearing, and did we set anything?
It's set for the next meeting.
We'll have something set for the next meeting. So we'll hold that unless you have further discussion on it.
I'm thrilled. I think it's an excellent, I'm glad we talked about it early in October, and I think what we have before is the, basically the draft ordinance. It recites the section of the code which allows us to do it perfectly. I think it's simply money that we're leaving out there that we're not recouping to, and it's not a revenue stream, it's a recovery stream. It's a cost that we expand from various services and respond to accidents and things of the like pursuant to DUIs and reckless driving, and I don't think the town taxpayers should be putting a bill for that. I think there's individuals who undertake to drive reckless behavior should be doing.
I'm sorry.
No, you're fine.
I just hope that at some point in time, we have an understanding with the local court system that, you know, a good number of these charges are usually reduced down, which takes us out of any kind of recovery, and I hope that, you know, we have a clear understanding that we're not going to stand for reductions to lesser charges to get them out of a fine. You know, it's just like we put in with the handicapped parking at five hundred dollars a ticket. It's pretty expensive, but I see an awful lot of empty handicap spots nowadays when I go out. That's the main concern that I have, and I don't know how we control it from that side of the fence.
Well, the reality is, I mean, not that I'm an expert on it at all, but we don't control the judges, and if they decide to reduce the charge, or if it's pursuant to an agreement with the Commonwealth Turnoffs, because these charges, because, and I appreciate the work of our attorneys, because you all know I want to read this more expansively to include any time that there's a reckless driving ticket that's given, but if it's pursuant to an accident, the reality is that very rarely you're going to have a reduction in the charge when there's an accident involved. If it was a general reckless driving, you're going to hit a speed of eighty-one, for instance, you'll get that, you know, reduced down a lot of times to improper driving from the judge or something less threatening, it was like an infraction, but I think if there's an accident requirement, I think there'd be few and far between, frankly. I think that they're usually going to make it stick because of the necessity of. I think that they're usually going to make it stick because of the necessity of being a punitive measure against the individual. Think twice next time before you do it.
I'm glad we've thrown down the gauntlet.
Yes, I agree, I agree.
Okay. We'll take this up, and a public hearing to be set later in the meeting. Mr. Stipes, Mr. Van Hoosier, street committee?
The person tied among the ones in the city's in phase five has been pulled for this evening, and when will that be presented?
It's going to be a public hearing, the eighteenth of December.
Okay. So I'm going to be pushed out of the ways. The request before this evening, the street committee's reviewed, is off of Run Oak Road. It's a former nursery at the corner of Nursery Lane and, and the Run Oak Road, about four sixty-eleven. It is a simple lot line adjustment. There's, I guess, before you show is a dash line internal to the property that's going to be vacated in a solid line showing the new lot lines. It sort of tidies up some of the building structures in the form of greenhouses, the hoop houses that you see on the right or to the north. The street committee's reviewed it, it's conforming with our subdivision ordinance, and the street committee recommends approval of the plan as presented, and I'll make that recommendation in the form of a motion.
Second. Motion and a second to approve this request.
Mr. Stipes, one question. Just because I, for some reason, I cannot get my brain wrapped around exactly where that's at. That is the going out towards where the Huckleberry Restaurant is, out that direction, on the left side.
That's correct.
That's how it's. Passed there.
Passed there on the left.
I believe that there's a use to it.
Exactly. Yeah, come down the hill.
Can we have a motion and a second discussion? All in favor of approval, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Motion carries. Mr. Town Manager?
I'd like to set a public hearing for the vacation evening right away in Kensington, phase five, the eighteenth of December. That's the one that was on the agenda, found out needed to have a public hearing.
December eighteenth?
Yes.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second. Hold that public hearing on Kensington Court, December eighteenth. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Motion carries.
The traffic study for Patrick's Way and North Franklin Street intersection, we need to delay that. Have a report to you on the second of January. We need to get some equipment from V dot, and it won't be available until the seventeenth of December. And they're going to bring it up that day and train us on how to use it. So I'd like to bring that report. Supposed to have been in by that second meeting in December, but they've been busy doing traffic counts and signal intersection studies, so equipment wasn't available to us. Basically, I'm taking. Last thing I have is Mr. Woody, you have a drawing in front of you and an agreement. Mr. Woody's proposing to donate eighty acres of real estate to the town to be used as park and stormwater management area. It's basically the strip that eventually will be built as a road between North Franklin Street and Pepper's Ferry Road. Right now, there's no money, and V dot's plan to build it, but it's in a long range plan, so hopefully one of these days. But until then, we can use it as a park and stormwater management area. And here are a few highlights of, I'll call them, I guess, restrictions or conditions. Like for it to be called Woody Park, Palms of Park. He's having it appraised, and he'd like a tax deduction letter from us for the appraised value. Stormwater quality requirements, he's still required to do all the stormwater quality requirements for his subdivisions, but the new stormwater pine will take care of the stormwater quantity issues. And there is a pile there, it's topsoil, that if we need it moved before, he's ready to move it, then we, we'd be responsible for moving that. But we think we might have a way to not have to move it at this point. That's the major.
You're saying that you think that Mr. Woody is going to need to move that?
He's going to be using that topsoil when he develops Lions Gate and the other phases of Oak Tree Townhomes. That's why it's theirs to, so he can put it back around those buildings when he builds them, and.
Is he doing anything work now?
He, no, he, we have plans in for that, and he hopes to start very shortly. Stormwater's been an issue over the past couple of years because of regs changed, and this, he should be able to start now.
This is, this is the corridor for the Huckleberry Trail as well.
Yes. We've been working with him to ask for an easement for the Huckleberry Trail and the stormwater pine that we're going to be putting in with the edge of my Diamond Hills Stream Restoration. And he decided he'd donate all the land to us. But council has to accept the donation, he can't just give us land unless y'all accept it. So I, I recommend it to accept this property.
So I'll make a move, motion that we accept the property with the conditions that are listed on.
Second.
Motion and a second to accept this property that's offered by Mr. Woody. Discussion?
Mr. Helms, was this, was the information from the agreement, was that part of our packet, or was that delivered tonight?
Tonight. We, it wasn't finished until today.
I, I, I mean, I've got a chance to read through it before the meeting, but I'd be lying to the council if I, but I understood everything fully. I respect the move that we stay this until the first meeting in December, so we have a chance to read through this. Because in some language, on the top, top of that page three, the part is heretofore hereby, heretofore hereby agreed and ported on the venture removal of the topsoil by the grantor. Granted, it's some sort of conditions that, that language thereafter. I just, I mean, I've read through it one time, but I haven't, I haven't thought about it. Haven't, and not that I think, I, I think that it's a fantastic idea at first blush, that we, obviously, any kind of land that is, that's the best type of land to get. I, I'd like an opportunity to review these three pages, this agreement that we'll be signing, because at this point, we'll be authorizing Mr. Helms to sign it. It'll be an agreement between the town and Mr. Woody.
Okay, we have a motion.
Again, no disrespect to the, to the, what's being offered, I think it's fantastic, I'd just like to really read through this.
If we do have a motion and a second to accept the donation of land unless.
I, I would be willing to withdraw the motion and delay it until the fourth of December. Now, I strongly support it, and I'm not going to be here on the fourth of December, but at least you know what my feeling is.
Was, was this agreement reviewed, buried not only by you, but by our town attorney?
Yes. It was reviewed by the town attorney.
I would like to.
I will say there was only one suggestion that I had made that I don't see reflected here. And that is, the staff is agreeing that it will, you know, expedite the plan review, but I don't want there to, to look as if we're agreeing to approve the plan.
Right.
That obviously, we can't agree to that before council. I just clarify that.
I would like to act on it because of the importance of this for at least two projects, actually three, the road, the Huckleberry Trail, and the stormwater project. And I think it's a very generous offer.
It is.
And I don't want people to have too much time to think about it.
I need to sign, right?
So our staff has reviewed it, our attorney's reviewed it, I say let's do it, but I'll go along with council's pleasure, but I don't want anyone to have too much time to think.
If we need to.
In due regard, I, I would think it'd be nice if we, Mr. Woody has been here several times to council, and, and the situation has not been very rosy. And this would be a nice change, that maybe even we could invite him to come here and, and, you know, express our appreciation.
He, he was planning to come to the next meeting. If, if we did need to move the topsoil pile, just be the end of it. Southern end towards Oak Tree Townhomes. Wouldn't be the whole pile, because the trail cuts right across the end of the pile, where we have an option, a possibility of going around the end of the pile and not have moved it at all.
And he'll let us use some of the topsoil of this parcel of land that he's giving us?
He shouldn't need any.
If he gives it to us, then it becomes ours, is that correct? Is it our topsoil?
He retains possession.
Okay.
Well, having learned that the attorney has reviewed this, and only had the one comment which we're aware of, I once again enter my motion that we approve it.
My second stands.
I just have one, one question to the attorney. Any reservations at all outside of that?
No, no. I just didn't want it to look like we were agreeing to approve something prior to the meeting.
It appears to be a generous offer on behalf of Mr. Woody, and the only thing he's asking is that we use it for a park and call it Woody Park.
Probably cool.
I have no problem with that, but this, understand, this land is only going to be used by us until the road comes through. So it could be ten years, it could be twenty years.
If it's in the widening of one fourteen, it could be a century and a half.
We will not be here.
I, I don't play it all, honestly, that.
Mr. Helms, do you have any reservations at all?
We will. We will.
All right. Unless I'm giving you a chance to change his mind. Ms. Clerk, will you poll council on accepting this gift from Mr. Woody?
Yes, sir. Councilman Harper?
Aye.
Councilman Hall?
Aye, with the qualification that because our town attorney has reviewed this.
Done an a with asterisk.
Councilman Hubbard?
Aye.
Councilman Schell Walter?
Aye.
Councilman Stipes?
Aye.
Councilman Van Hoosier?
Aye.
And the motion carries six oh, and I imagine Mr. Woody will be here in the near future, and maybe we can express our appreciation to him.
If we get a chance, I don't think a letter from council thanking him.
Oh, I think so, too, yeah.
And I'd like to say, Mr. Hall did learn something from the Board of Supervisors meeting. Tacking on your vote a little bit, a comment.
What's that?
They did that several times at the Board of Supervisors meeting.
Oh, what I just did?
So you did learn something.
I learned something at the Board of Supervisors meeting, I did. Now, I, I mean, I want to make it, make it, I think it's a fantastic opportunity. I have no issues at all, and I agree with you, Mr. Stipes, we want to sometimes grab it with both hands when it's offered. I just, I know the town attorney reviewed it, and now that some of it's reviewed, I have no problem with it.
I want to win the lottery, wish you had. What else, Mr.? Mr. Helms?
The Blacksburg has set a public hearing for the joiner study for the twenty-second of January. Let's know that we don't have to do any, set ours yet.
January?
Twenty-second.
Anything else?
That's all, sir.
I have one comment, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Just as an update to the individuals that are present at the council, and I'll make a brief. The Board of Supervisors agreed last Wednesday to set aside four hundred thousand dollars for the benefit of Christiansburg High School alone. There was some debate, some considerable debate, but they were unanimous in their decision. Now, that's for improvements for any type of maintenance, someone to refurbish some areas to improve, to, there's some safety issues. Mr. Bradshaw, the class president of the senior class in Christiansburg High School, was there and spoke as well. And he spoke, I think, was the very first one to leave the speaking, I believe, if memory serves. I got there a little bit later. But the money's there. The requirement is that the school board now approach the Board of Supervisors with a list of what they intend to do. The money will then be released, and my understanding is, of course, at that point, the school board can do whatever they want with it. But if it's earmarked from the Board of Supervisors for improvements at Christiansburg High School, but the improvements are not earmarked individually, I think that would stand. So I would anticipate that there'd be a lot of decisions from the town of Christiansburg going to the school board meeting, and, and frankly, holding them to the fire a little bit to say, look, we need some, there's some things that have to be done now for that high school. Chris Tuck had a great presentation detailing a lot of the safety concerns, wiring issues, scaffolding issues. No, I think it was, there's no safety barriers on the ladders that go thirty feet up, the sidewalk, which is deteriorating outside. I mean, it's one thing after another, after another, the lockers that don't work. Mr. Bradshaw, I think, pointed those out as well, and he deals with it on a daily basis. It's been twenty years since I've been there. But the point is that we need to have people from the town go to the school board meeting and say, look, the money's there, let's use it while it's there. And as Mr. Stipes said earlier about this land, I don't know how long the money will be there. And if it's not utilized quickly, I mean, it's very easily to be put back in the pot. I don't want that to happen, because Christiansburg High School is deteriorating at a rapid pace. It's now the oldest high school in the county. And I think it was born the same year that Blacksburg High School was built, and.
Nineteen seventy-four.
And that one's since, not there, it's, it's not usable. And so, again, I would hope that, that we would have our citizens be aware of that and go, go out to school board meetings.
Would it be out of place for us to send, send any type of support to the school board? I mean, it was an incredible presentation. I think a few of the supervisors, such as Matt Gabriel, he was sort of put off that, you know, this, our, our members of the school board have never done a presentation like that or presented anything. Because if you get a chance, take a look at it, I was pretty, some of the safety issues, especially in the auditorium. It was very surprising, especially today's, day and age. Thinking back in the eighties, it's probably exactly how it was left when I lived there. And if not, in worse shape.
I think it was very unique the way some of the pictures of the auditorium, he took just the front row seating, and in one picture was like three of the four seats were broken, and the other, the right side, it was what, five of the seven were broken. And the, I mean, the sad fact is that the school board, to conduct their meeting the previous Monday, on the budget there at the high school, they had import their own sound system.
Audio system.
Because the sound system there at the Christiansburg High School was in such poor shape that it wouldn't suffice for their purposes. I think it's sad when, I'll, I'll leave it at that. I, I think if we need to, if we can send a letter or something like that, could be from the support of council, I think it'd be fantastic. But I just hope the citizens understand that money is set aside for the benefit of Christiansburg High School alone at this point.
I think it just goes a long way to show that the philosophy that's been around for a lot of years with the county is to build something and then let it decay and replace it thirty years later or twenty years later. I hope they've learned some lessons in all the new schools that they're building, and they will maintain them as, as they need to be. You can't just, you can't build it and let it go. You've got to repair it as you go.
Well, it's been my experience over the years with the school systems. They do have maintenance schedules for the buildings, but usually in budget crunch time, that's the first thing that goes. Christiansburg High School opened first of September nineteen seventy-four. Mr. Booth was there to welcome the students to Christiansburg High School. And it has been a good building, but the building has deteriorated in some respects, particularly the sidewalks. And that's the one thing that's caught my eye. It was mentioned by Mr. Tuck that money had been appropriated to remove the mounds in front of the school. Of course, they were decorative when the school was built, but I don't see spending fifty thousand dollars to, to do that when that money could be spent on sidewalk repair or something else. So I think it's a good move, and if you want to address the school board, we'll excuse you sometime if you'd like to go and speak to them. Or at least let your wishes be known by letter. But I, I think the four hundred thousand dollars is a step in the right direction. Of course, it's a drop in the bucket as far as what we need. Thank you, Mr. Bradshaw, for your presentation. I'm sure that that money was appropriated and based a whole lot on what you presented, so thank you. Anything else?
Is this something that in a future meeting, that as members of council, that we could have a letter sent from the town to the school board to request that those funds be utilized? I'm worried the funds won't be used.
I think that's, that's the rumor now, is that it's, even though it was unanimous from the Board of Supervisors that the funds are not going to be used for Christiansburg High School. That's why I mentioned, probably not a letter from the administration or the town, but something, something brief from council on our support for what they've already voted on and agreed to at a Board of Supervisors meeting.
Maybe what we do is we commend them for allocating the money and look forward to the implementation of it.
and look forward to the implementation of it to get the project done, just something in that vein.
Well, the problem there, we made, we have allocations from the Board of Supervisors, but they can't do a thing until the school board comes before them and I think that, I noticed there was nowhere from the school board that was at the Board of Supervisors meeting that night, even though it was on the agenda for that presentation regarding Christiansburg High School. That's what worries me.
Who is it, I should know, but who is Christiansburg's representative on that?
Penny Franklin, I knew her.
Okay, but I knew Penny was on there.
And there was certainly.
Is anyone else serving as more than one?
We share the Auburn district, Jamie Barnes. And there's one more district we share with the Charlesville Austin area.
Alright, well, we can, we can send a letter of appreciation to the Board of Supervisors for allocating the money and a separate letter to the school board admonishing them to use the money for a list of projects that have been mentioned here.
I think that's a good, good question.
Right? Consider that done. We have three applications for the Christiansburg Planning Commission. And I don't think we need to be in a big hurry about replacing those members, but I need some direction from you on how you wanna do it. The last time, we held interviews. And we have two positions to fill, is that right, Nicole?
That's correct, we do have these.
Okay. And if you wanna wait until January and we'll set a date for holding some interviews with prospective candidates?
That would be fine. We're, right now, I would say on, in Planning Commission, we have about a hundred percent attendance every meeting, aren't we? We're doing very well that way.
I think we've set a presence and we should carry through with it and have the interviews. Okay.
Would anybody object to having a second meeting in December? So we can make a decision at the following, or either that night or the following meeting?
The first meeting?
An hour before council meeting?
That'd be fine. An hour prior to the October, I mean, the December?
Probably more than an hour.
Or maybe hour and a half, fifteen minutes.
Council to all, it's the grill, you know.
Six.
Six and we have a closed session for that, for the interviews, right?
I thought last time, we limited it to, what, fifteen minutes per?
Yeah, we did.
So an hour before would be enough and then five minutes between interviews, so.
Alright, so you wanna set that up for six thirty?
Probably six would be.
Yeah, six would be better because we may have a street committee meeting. Alright, six o'clock on December the eighteenth, is that the? Yep. Is that the third Thursday?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
Does he can sense us here, gentlemen?
Yes.
Alright. Six o'clock, December eighteenth. What else needs to come before council?
Yeah, I just wanted to say a comment here. I noticed that the Christmas lights are up here in town and whatever, whoever's responsible for that, they've done a great job and we're gonna have a, you know, a very decorative Christmas and they've done a great job and I think it's good we put that in the minutes. And that's what I feel anyway.
I noticed coming into town last night from Redford and to look down Main Street and just to see the consistency and see the lights, they really did a nice job.
Yeah, I think it started last year, right?
I have to admit, my eyes are a little bad and I thought the, the lights up on top was a Santa Claus, but it wasn't, it was just a long sight. That's my bad guess.
That's we should have thought a little hard.
Really know how to get the anticipation of my kids going here.
It's just around the corner. Anything else come before council?
Work session the twenty-seventh.
Yeah, work session on the twenty-seventh. We're working on an agenda now and we'll spend as much time in that evening as you feel necessary to.
And then what you watch here at quarter till six, is that it?
It starts at six, we'll have some pizza or something.
Who's buying pizza?
Steve Hovtall.
You are.
Don't let Bowns buy it because it'll have green peppers on it. You gonna do that?
More, more of the mayor's famous ham biscuits.